I love hearing the doorbell ring.
Nathaniel says we're going live in 30 seconds.
Okay. We're about up to 22, 23.
We may be on because it's six.
Okay, all right, I'm going to start, welcome everyone to this very special meeting, June 17th, 2020. We are here tonight to honor and recognize some very special people who are part of the Auburn School Department. So on behalf of the Auburn School Committee, welcome to all of you this evening. And without further ado, I'm going to turn this right on over to Superintendent Rondon.
Yes, so welcome, I think this is our biggest Zoom meeting for school committee of, since we went remote using Zoom. So I want to say thank you so much for everyone participating tonight because it is unusual. We would have been, you know, in a wonderful place with our family and friends and celebrating and looking at each other. You know, I can only see the first screen, but know that I'm seeing all of you, even though we are not all seeing each other. You're definitely all in our thoughts as we recognize our retirees this evening and our staff that have been recognized for the system dropout prevention award. And there will be people probably coming in as we continue on because the routine has usually been, we start with retirees and then we move into system dropout awards, prevention awards. So we're going to jump in to our retirees, we're going to be recognizing eight retirees during this meeting this evening. There, there have been other retirees that were earlier in the year that the school committee got to recognize, like Ros Walton and Ken Bastine, and then there were some folks that couldn't make it this evening. So Michelle, if you could, and I've got to share it with you, so yeah, I will do that right now.
We've all learned that code really well, haven't we? Just doing this means share your screen.
Right, right. So I get it, I haven't gotten in that habit yet. But I first want to say, because I have to go where I can read, we're working on this together tonight. Okay, so first of all, I want to read a quote that kind of sums up our retirees that I've read before that I think is really just always so pertinent, but it's an excerpt from Within My Power by Forest Whitcraft. And it says, "100 years from now, it will not matter what kind of car I drove, what kind of house I lived in, how much money was in my bank account, nor what my clothes look like. But the world may be a better place because I was important in the life of a child." And so all of the retirees this evening are well deserved in this new chapter of their life. We want to thank them for inspiring so many, touching so many lives, and we will be forever grateful for all that they have given to so many children of Auburn. They've given just not only to our children, but been positive members of our school communities. So I'm going to start with Beth Cook. I want to make sure you're seeing what I think you're seeing. Yes, there we go, good. So Beth Cook, and what I'm reading has been put together by the people who supervise them. That's why all of our administrators are also on this meeting. So I'm going to read Beth's words from Bill Grant. "Beth has been at the helm of the Auburn Adult and Community Education's Diploma Program for the past 25 years. During this time, Beth has advocated ensured students have access to pathways for diploma. She has also worked closely with Edward Little High School, helping students meet their graduation requirements through various pathways like our ELPM program. As Beth starts her new chapter in retirement, the Auburn School Department, of course, its community, thanks Beth for her selfless efforts to ensure all students can earn a diploma." And I have to tell you that attending adult graduation, which we missed this year, you can truly tell how much Beth and the students in our adult ed programs bond and have such a strong relationship as she hears the stories that our students have of what were the barriers or what were the pathways that took them away from graduating in a traditional way by her proud, as she's really the mama of the graduates, and you can see what strong and positive rapport she builds with our students. So thank you, Beth, for all that you've given to the Auburn School Department. Thank you, thank you, Beth. Our next person that we're going to honor is Tammy Hoy. And I have to tell you that although Tammy has only been in the Auburn School Department one year, I would say that Mike Davis, her principal, Ryan Fairchild, our special ed director, were so thankful that she came to Auburn to help kick off our new autism program at Walton. Her expertise in education and with, helping students with autism really, really helped kick off our program and put it in a good place as she leaves us for her retirement. So Tammy was started in the nursing field and she's had 28 years in education. She decided to retire, before she decided to retire, she saw our opening at Walton and came to join Auburn in our autism program. "This program has had a huge success because of the wonderful, kind-hearted and hardworking person that Tammy is. Because of this success, we're able to move from four to five students this year and we look forward to expanding to eight students for next school year. Although she's only been in Auburn for one year, it was as if she was always part of the Walton community. Her love and dedication of supporting students with special needs made Tammy an amazing asset to not only Walton, but Guy E. Rolfs School in Norway where she spent the majority of her career. Tammy, they were right when they told Mike, quote, 'This will be your best hire ever. Best of luck, Tammy, and we wish you all the best.'" So congratulations to Tammy. The next retiree that we're going to be recognizing is Russ Barlow. And I have to say, David Uretzian knew that Russ would be able to fill his big shoes when he retired, and he certainly did. "After eight years at the helm of Franklin and Merrill Hill Alternative Program, he took what David has started and built on it and continued to work with the staff to honor the alternative needs of their students and raise the bar even higher. The importance of the whole child and allowing them to learn in a safe school culture has always been most important to him. And he has also recognized the importance of students being ready when they graduate for whatever pathway they may choose, whether it's working, starting a career or entering college. With his leadership, he supported bringing multiple pathways for students by increasing enrollment in our LRTC programs, started a welding class, a culinary arts class, and he also increased the number of students who went on to post-secondary options. I think he's always proudest when his students go to whatever pathway and then come back to the school to celebrate in their successes. His predecessor also has big shoes to fill. Thank you, Russ, for working hard each day to make a difference in the lives of our students." So congratulations to Russ. Our next retiree is Linda Copas. She, although has only been with us for two years, she has truly made a difference. "She grew up in Chicago, Illinois, and experienced life in a variety of locations. She earned a bachelor's in psychology and English, and then she went on to get a master's degree in special education from Vanderbilt College in Tennessee. She chose to focus on special education when she realized that the attitude of students and teachers created a focus on celebrating growth and a determination to never give up. As Linda said, that is what you want for every kid. She began her teaching career in 1972 and served special education students in rural Missouri, Virginia, Tennessee, and Maine. Most of her years were spent in Nashville. And then she decided that she would come to Maine for a sea change, lured her to our beautiful state where she worked in SAD 52 as a behavior specialist. And then she came to us for Park Elementary School to teach special education. And this past year, she's been at Sherwood Heights School as a valued member of their school community. She was respected and embraced by both her students and teachers, and she will be missed. And I know visiting Linda's room, she always had a calm demeanor and always relating to her littles by letting them be themselves, but also holding high standards for what they were expected to do each day. So thank you, Linda, for all that you gave to your students in Auburn."
Did I say something?
You may, Linda.
I just wanted to say, it's like my grandmother used to tell me that no matter how rocky your road on the journey, you always end with the best.
Oh yeah, Katie took those the other day, yeah.
We hear someone talking about the pictures I took the other day.
I am still...
I think it's Beth. Beth, Beth. No, she can't hear me. Let me see if I can mute. Okay, Linda, unmute yourself and then say what you were saying.
Okay, my grandmother used to tell me that no matter how rocky the road on your journey, you should always end with the best. So that's what I've done, and I thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next retiree is Pam Wimmet. I thought I had... Hold on. Looking to see. Okay, I think we're good. All right. So Pam has been 39 years service teaching is certainly a measure of true commitment. Pam's enthusiasm and love of teaching is obvious when you watch her with students. Her willingness to go above and beyond for students and staff have certainly made her an asset to the Fairview team. Her kind spirit and passion for her work helps to encourage and support her students so they always feel comfortable and successful. She pushes them to be the best they can be. Pam, you'll be missed by students and staff. Thank you for your years in Auburn and thank you for making a difference in the Fairview community. And I know Celeste and Stephanie, when you decide to retire, I got a phone call, what are we going to do? Because you have been the interventionist, the literacy coach, the data person, the person that they called on around literacy expertise. So I know Pam, you also have big shoes to fill, all that you have been doing for the Fairview community. So thank you, Pam, for your time too. So congratulations. Our next retiree is Marie Dosty. And I know for Marie, this was a hard decision for her to retire after her time with us. But she's been part of the Fairview team for 22 years. She's someone who appreciates and values each and every one of her students. She encourages and supports her students to ensure a healthy learning environment for all. And she has done this, no doubt, each of her teaching days. Marie has been an integral part of the Auburn School Department and especially Fairview School, sharing her love of learning with so many. So thank you for your years in Auburn and thank you for making a difference for the Fairview community. May you enjoy everything the next chapter holds for you. And I will add that I know Shelley, if she were speaking, you have been such a wonderful team leader for the gifted and talented team. And I know it's your expertise in informing Shelley and working with Shelley and the team on what's the best needs for our gifted and talented teachers. And you also have had to cover and wear many hats with your team as we have been, you know, trying to fill positions in our gifted and talented program. And we just so thank you for your time and effort going above and beyond and making sure we have the best programming for our gifted and talented students. So thank you, Marie, for all your work and effort as well. Our next retiree is Cheryl Barker. And I had the honor of hiring Cheryl Barker when I was the principal at Sherwood Heights School. Cheryl, this is what Lila has to say about what you've brought to the Park Avenue community. "Cheryl was amazing at popping up at every special event and discreetly made her way around the room snapping pictures. She has captured so many special moments of the Park Avenue story in pictures, and we are so grateful for those memories. And if you go to Park Avenue for their community meetings and their events, there's always beautiful pictures of students and staff and the work they're doing in their school. When she didn't have a camera in her hand, Cheryl was working with her kids, boosting their self-confidence and their reading skills as their interventionist." boosting their self-confidence and their reading skills as their interventionist. Cheryl also worked with teachers and as she supports students in the regular classroom as well. Good luck in your retirement adventure Cheryl, thanks for the memories. And we know Cheryl can't wait for COVID-19 to break so that she can go visit her family that lives across the country. She and her husband are anxiously awaiting the opportunity to set out on those new adventures. So, congratulations Cheryl and thank you for everything you've given.
Thank you.
Our last retiree that we're honoring this evening is Sarah Pooleen. And Lila, Sarah, Lila, Sarah has so appreciated. And Lila, we have appreciated all the things that you have done for Park Avenue staff, students and families. It would take all day and I do know that for a fact Sarah. You seem to be everywhere helping out with that smile of yours. Her dedication is genuine as I see her working with students who struggle academically and she never gave up on them and they knew it. That is why kids have a great deal of respect for her. But it doesn't end there. Sarah continued her school day into the evening, coordinating the Park Avenue CLC program. She organized some pretty amazing CLC events and I'm so glad that Sarah will continue her after-hours with CLC kids next school year. So, thank you Sarah, this is not goodbye yet. And I'll tell you, Sarah has more energy and just gives and gives and even with everything else, she has been working hard through COVID-19 to also support what our needs were for students at Park Avenue. So, thank you, thank you Sarah for all of your dedication to our students.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all our retirees.
Thank you. So, on behalf of the Auburn School Committee, I'd also like to extend our greatest thanks and deepest appreciation for all your years of service to the Auburn School Department. As a fellow educator myself, I understand the dedication, the devotion and the expertise that you have all brought to the table through all these years. So, we wish you the best in the next phase of your lives. And if any of you are ever finding yourself with some downtime or itching to get back into a classroom, I think you can find the subbing application on the Auburn School Department's website. We'd be happy to see you walk through the halls again. So, congratulations everyone.
That's very true. I like your thinking there Karen.
Awesome, very good.
Now, now we switch over where Michelle McCollum, she is going to be honoring our system dropout prevention award winner, award receivers this year. Michelle?
Great. So, I'm going to set myself up just a little bit here. Yes. So, each year, we ask for nominations for our system dropout prevention awards. And this year, we have quite a group of people to honor and recognize. The system dropout award is presented, dropout prevention award, excuse me, is presented to those people who work within our school department, any of our staff, who have demonstrated through their actions, impact, positive impact on our students' abilities to remain in school, have successful school experiences and finish their high school career by walking across the stage to receive their diploma. So, to reduce the incidence of dropout in a student's life is the ultimate purpose. And the thing we want to recognize in these people tonight, each one of them have exemplified that very thing. So, we'll be, I'll be sharing with each of you who have been nominated and will be receiving the award, or actually in this case, you already have. If I understand correctly, they were delivered, I hope, they were delivered to your schools and you've already received them. So, again, we'll share what the person who nominated you had to say about you in just a minute. But first, we want to continue with a tradition, longstanding tradition here in Auburn and share with you a wonderful children's story that exemplifies kind of what you do in your own way every day for children. Now, some of you have heard this story before and some of you have heard it very many times, but just like children, we have our favorite books and we like to have them read to us over and over and over again. So, if it's the first time, get ready, this is a lovely book. If it's a repeat for you, enjoy it just as if you were a child reading, you know, hearing a book again. So, with that said, let me see. How Full Is Your Bucket? Written by Tom Rath and Mary Reckmeyer. And the illustrations are by Maury J. Manning. Felix was putting one of the last blocks on his tower when his little sister came in. "I want to build with you," she said. Felix scowled, "Go away, you're too little." "I'm big." "Hey, stay back, you'll knock it over." "I can be very careful." "Go play with your baby toys, Anna." And Anna gives it a big thwack. "Grandpa." So, Grandpa shook his head. "Felix, you just dipped into your sister's bucket." Like everyone else, Anna has an invisible bucket. When it's empty, she feels bad, but when it's full, she feels great. Didn't you ever notice your own bucket? Invisible bucket? Hmm. Sometimes Felix couldn't quite tell when his grandfather was joking. But the next morning, when Felix woke up, there it was. A small gray bucket floating above his head. When Felix came down to have his breakfast, his mom was in a hurry. "I've got a meeting this morning and it's almost time to go." "Anna, sit still." Felix slipped and chocolate wheats scattered across the floor. "Felix," yelled his mom, "you should have used the stool to reach that." Felix could feel his bucket tip and a big invisible drips began to spill out. Drip, drip. "Ha ha," Anna laughed as she crunched the cereal with her shoe. Drip. "Get the broom and clean that up before you miss the bus," scolded mom. With the school bus honking, Felix quickly swept up the chocolate wheats and grabbed the last blueberry muffin. But before he could even take one bite. Whoops, 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 whoops. Before he could even take one bite, backing, 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 backing. Oh, are we missing a page? Uh-uh. Buster jumped up and grabbed the muffin from his hand. Drip. And as he got on the bus, look at Felix's new backpack. My baby brother has one just like it. Drip. Felix said. Drip. "Watch out shrimp." And another drip. Ah, ah, ah. Let's see. It was still morning and Felix's bucket felt almost empty. As he watched his classmates walk into the room, he secretly hoped they would trip and fall. That's what it feels like when you have an empty bucket. Uh-oh. He slid into his seat and waited for something else bad to happen. Just a minute. See the page. Mrs. Bumble Nickle walked slowly up to his desk and handed him a paper. He could hardly bear to look. "Felix, you wrote a wonderful story. Would you please share it with the class?" Felix grinned and felt a big drop land right in his bucket. Drop. The class grew quiet. They laughed in all the right places and oohed in the scary parts. When Felix finally read the end, everyone clapped, even Emily who sat next to him and didn't usually like dinosaurs. Felix felt a whole shower of drops land in his bucket. Maybe the day wouldn't be so bad after all. Got a note from his mom. Drop. Team captains today are Veronica and Felix. Drop. Nice cow. It's a dog. Well, nice colors there Felix. Cool laser ant backpack Felix. By afternoon, Felix's bucket was nearly full. At recess, when he looked around, Felix suddenly realized that his grandpa was right. Everyone else had a bucket too. "Let me help you." Drop, drop. "Here's your baseball." Catch. "Thanks dude." Drop. "Hi, I'm Felix. Is this your first day?" "Yes, I'm Amir." Drop, drop. The strange thing was that for every drop he helped put in someone else's bucket, he felt another drop in his own. When Felix burst in the door after school, he shouted, "You were right grandpa, I do have a bucket and I understand now how it works." Then he saw Anna's torn doll. "Bad dog," he almost scolded. But then he thought, dogs might have invisible buckets too. "Your doll will be okay Anna," said Felix. "Mom will fix her." "Until then, do you want to help me build the tallest building in the world with my blocks?" And so they did. And so there you have it. You are the bucket fillers, the ones who every day make a difference in the lives of the children in our school. And we are so appreciative for that every day that you give to your students in the unique ways that you impact them. So, without further ado, we're going to recognize some folks tonight. And I, you know, maybe you'll be, it's a loss to us because we can't call you up to the podium and have you stand there, but maybe for some of you, you're saying, phew, I picked the right year for this to happen. I don't have to stand up in front of everyone. So, let's start with Auburn Middle School and Lexi Viscardi. Lexi is an English Language Arts teacher, a team leader and a soccer coach at Auburn Middle School. Her dedication to her work and her students is unmatched. Lexi is one of the most engaging and dynamic teachers at the school. Students love her class and because of this, each year, many parents request that their students have Ms. Viscardi as a teacher. The work she does with students helps to send them to the high school with a genuine love of learning. So, Lexi, thank you for what you do and congratulations on your recognition.
Thank you.
Next is Bonnie Moran. Bonnie is an ed tech who works with the most at-risk students in the school. She cares deeply about her students and their families and goes above and beyond in her work every day. During the school closure this spring, Bonnie delivered food to students who couldn't access all over the city. She checked in with students we were worried about and even helped find a student who was missing temporarily. Student was found. Bonnie, I thank you. You were always there, always willing to go to a new place with a moment's notice. So, thank you for going above and beyond and your dedication to students.
Thank you. I saw that student the other day and they called me a snitch.
Oh, well, you know, it's one of those things.
I'm good, thanks.
That's good, thanks. Next, we recognize a teacher from East Auburn. Amy Daven, who is a third grade teacher. Ms. Daven is an amazing teacher who teaches from the heart. She goes above and beyond every day to make learning exciting and finds the most creative ways to do this. For example, during remote learning, students received a flat teacher, a paper bitmoji version of Ms. Daven. They were invited to take along Flat Ms. Daven on their adventures. Subsequently, students wrote all about the incredible things they did with Ms. Daven, like hiking and biking and eating ice cream. And this was just one of many engaging activities that Ms. Daven came up with to stay connected with the students and to celebrate their learning. In Ms. Daven's class, every child feels important, valued and special. Ms. Daven makes East Auburn School and this world a better place. Thank you Ms. Daven, you are a true difference maker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Edward Little High School and Mary Beth Gollay. Mary Beth has consistently gone far above and beyond to help and support students on their path to graduation. She has identified many of our most at-risk students and worked with all stakeholders to be sure that students have their needs met and everyone is focused on making sure that that student graduates. She uses every resource available and then she looks for more, all in order to make sure that our students graduate. She leads many meetings and determines interventions for students to make sure they stay in school and walk across that stage. It's because of this that many of our at-risk students seek her out as their safe space and go-to person in school. And I know personally, Mary Beth, I can always pick up the phone and call you when I have that question about that student and you, whether they're yours or somebody else's, you always get back because you care about our kids. So, thank you so much, Mary Beth, for all you do.
Thank you.
TJ Abaka. TJ's entire mission has been about dropout prevention. That's what he's about. TJ supports students with an alternative pathway for credits towards graduation. He never says no to anyone who needs help. What separates TJ is that he works tirelessly to track down students, to find out where they're at in their academic needs and what they need in order to move forward. He uses his many community resources to help support students, to keep them engaged in school. He helps students build self-confidence by supporting them in finding part-time jobs and to see that they achieve their goals toward post-secondary education, all of which in turn ends up making that high school diploma most relevant for them. Thank you TJ for your tireless efforts. We appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to Fairview. And Lori Bowen. Lori is a second grade teacher at Fairview School. She builds strong rapport and trust with her students and her smile and open-door approach immediately sets kids at ease. Her classroom is welcoming and is always a great place to visit if you need a pick-me-up. That's written by Celeste, so I'm sure that you've seen her grace your door at times. Lori is reflective and is always looking for ways to help her students reach the high standards she sets. This fall, Lori will be jumping into fifth grade, so you can bet her former students are all hoping to have her again. Thank you Lori for all that you do for the students and for the whole Fairview community. Thank you. Steve Cummings. Steve is a sixth grade teacher at Fairview. He builds strong relationships with his students and makes it a point to make relevant connections with each and every one. Steve holds his students to high standards while encouraging and supporting them so they feel comfortable and successful. His positive attitude, sense of humor and commitment to Fairview is much appreciated by his students, his colleagues and the parents. His commitment to his students make him an asset to our team. Again, thank you Steve for your commitment and the difference that you make to the Fairview community. And Erin DeRoche. Erin's a third grade teacher at Fairview. She is a calm presence for her students and she works to provide a classroom setting that is mutual, that demonstrates mutual respect while holding her students to high standards and encouraging them and supporting them so they feel successful. Erin's teaching is relevant and she works hard to make sure that learning is fun. She goes above and beyond for her students to help them to be the best they can be. Thank you for making a difference in your children's lives, Erin. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Park Avenue. Terri Hartford. Terri is an amazing custodian. Her kind, friendly nature resonates throughout the school. Her kind, friendly nature resonates throughout the school. No matter what the need, Ms. Terri, a child got sick in the hallway, Ms. Terri, we're out of TP in the staff bathroom. Ms. Terri, I need Clorox wipes. She always takes care of it, no matter the request, always with a pleasant attitude and a smile. She truly cares about the school and everyone in it and demonstrates that through her every action. Terri, thank you for all you do to keep Park Avenue School clean, safe and looking great. Elsie Hartford. Throughout all of this unexpected COVID-19 turn of events, Elsie has been a constant in the kitchen, preparing and serving meals for Park Avenue students every week. She has a great sense of humor and her smile is contagious. Thank you, Elsie, for being so accommodating and caring for the students' families at Park Avenue School all the time, but particularly during this time when you gave so much as a food service provider to our families. We truly appreciate you.
Thank you.
Sherwood High School. Shawna Haley Berry, oh Bear, excuse me. Shawna is a library ed tech at Sherwood Heights. She goes above and beyond to ensure that students have access to quality literature and opportunities to meet the authors who write children's books. This year, students enjoyed video communications with Jess Keating, the author of Shark Lady, and Wendy Mass, the co-author of Bob. Our younger students created some special memories with the residents of Sarah Frye Home through a reading buddy program that she organized. During remote learning, Shawna continued sharing her favorite books with students through video postings and classroom Zoom meetings. She is a Sherwood Heights superstar. Thank you Shawna.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Shawna. Speech-language pathologist Abby Wilkins Bishop is an amazing advocate for Sherwood Heights students. Her unique combination of professional knowledge, warm and caring approach, creative energy and unwavering integrity serves students and staff well. She creates a safe environment where students are willing to engage and use targeted feedback to improve understanding and achieve successes. She does whatever it takes to make sure her students are successful. Thank you Abby for all you do for the Park Avenue students. Sharon, excuse me, Shannon Lamont, try that again. Shannon Lamontain is a special ed teacher at Sherwood Heights. She is a quiet leader who creates an exceptional learning environment for her students. She utilizes the value of respect to build trust in her classroom. High expectations are set and students are taught the skills they need in order to attain those expectations. Her focus and the focus of her students is always on the positive and because of that, her students thrive under her guidance. We appreciate all she does to make sure her students have their needs met every day. Thank you Shannon.
Thank you.
Sherwood Heights second grade teacher Brienne Crocker shares her sense of optimism with others every day. Students loved seeing her during morning bus duty this past year because they were greeted individually with a smile and a hello and sometimes a hug to start their day. She promotes a belief in a growth mindset amongst students and embraces the idea that direct instruction, effective praise and positive interventions will help children develop the social and executive functioning skills needed to be successful in school throughout their career. In addition, she is serving as a leader with instructional technology. She is a much appreciated member of the Sherwood Heights community. Thank you very much Brianna.
Thank you.
And onto Walton School. Lori Groves is recognized next. Lori is a speech pathologist at Walton and she has an amazing way with students. She is soft-spoken, kind, gentle and has the ability to connect with anyone she encounters. Students and staff love all she brings to the Walton School community. She is collaborative and partners with teachers, students and families to ensure they continue to, students make the best gains possible. Thank you Lori for always looking out for the needs of Walton students. You make Walton School culture a positive environment and your smile is contagious. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now Washburn School and Michelle Gagnon, 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 sorry. We have two Michelles, so I'll try that one again. Michelle Gagnon. Michelle hit the ground running three years ago as a reading recovery teacher and a literacy interventionist at Washburn. She was and continues to be eager to learn all she can about the students and the Washburn community. She works diligently on ways to best engage our struggling readers. She collaborates with her team and continually learns about best practices to inform her instruction. She primarily helps our first grade students in reading recovery and they, she helps them through the development of a love of reading. She also supports other grades in both reading and writing interventions. Because Michelle is seen all over the building, she has built relationships with students, all students at Washburn School. When students walk down the hall with Michelle, they always have a smile on their face. She builds strong relationships with her students and shows each and every one of them how much they matter. Michelle is earning this award because she is dedicated to helping our students grow in and out of the classroom. So thank you very much, Michelle, and congratulations. And Tammy Watson. Tammy is a first grade teacher and a reading recovery interventionist. This was the first year that Tammy had her own classroom and her students made leaps and bounds in math growth and achievement. Tammy is nurturing, a team player and is always open to learning about her craft. Tammy is excited to share the growth her students make and is always looking for innovative ways to work with her students. She shares her love of books with her students and loves to introduce them to new titles. She takes pride in her work and keeps the reading recovery book room in tip-top shape. That's no small feat when you're servicing so many, with so many adults and students. Tammy is an essential part of the Washburn community and a valued member of the Washburn staff. Congratulations Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so that wraps it up for tonight's recognition. Again, we so appreciate all of you and all that you do every day. We could go on and on and on about each one of you for sure, but again, we thank you and are so pleased to have this time to recognize you.
Thank you, Michelle. And also again, on behalf of the Auburn School Committee, I'd really like to extend our greatest thanks and our deepest appreciation for all you do. You see the kiddos that we serve as more than a student, you see them as a whole child and are so mindful to build those crucial relationships that are necessary for a lot of our kiddos, mine included. I'm thrilled to see some of his past educators here because I know firsthand the impact you made, Mr. Viscardi, to get him to read a book and to write a paper, to Ms. Bonnie with your jokes in the morning when Christian would come in, sometimes you were the only reason, excuse me, that he wanted to kind of walk in to see what you had to say, what little jest you were going to throw his way that day. And to Mrs. Bowen, who Celeste Bodett can attest for this, he ate lunch with Mrs. Bowen every day from third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and the threat of detention did not stop him at all from wanting to go see her. So from the bottom of our hearts, we thank each one, each and every one of you and you're a role model to us and to others. And so the Auburn School Department is lucky to have you. Thank you.
And I just want to say, this is normally one of my favorite, every year, this is my favorite event of being on the Auburn School Committee. I know some of our first-year members haven't been able to experience standing up there and passing the apple and the certificates to everybody. So I'm sorry we can't all be there in person, but just know that this is, we are so grateful, eternally grateful for your dedication to the district and the kids. So thank you and I'm sorry we can't all be there together.
All right, so this sort of is like the awkward, any final words?
No, no, just congratulations to everyone, the retirees and the award recipients. We are just so fortunate to have so, so many bright spots among us. So we just appreciate everything. We are going to transition because we can transition into our regular meeting. It said on the agenda that it would follow this meeting, this portion of it. So I don't know Karen, if you want to take, you know, a five-minute stretch to let people get off.
Yep, absolutely. I think we'll start back up again, probably, we'll start back up again probably at seven, just to give people time if they need to transition and hop off or use the restroom or whatever it is you need to do. So we'll go on break and we'll start back up again promptly when the computer monitors say seven. Sound good? All right, thanks everyone. Have a wonderful summer. Have a wonderful summer. Enjoy your break.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, it's seven o'clock, I'm going to start. Welcome, everyone, to the June 17th, 2020 Auburn School Committee meeting. I'm really hopeful that this is the last time I'm going to make this, this statement, that as of tonight, we are again meeting through teleconferencing in Zoom in accordance with COVID-19 safety guidelines. The meeting is being recorded and made available by Great Falls TV, which you can find through the auburnmain.gov website, or on Spectrum 1301, and on the city's YouTube channel for public access. So, welcome, everyone. Let's begin with introductions. Pam, let's start with you, please.
Pam Hart, Ward Two.
Karen Matthew, Ward Three.
Brian Bellknap, Ward Four.
Dan Plisone, Ward Five.
Faith Fontaine, At Large.
Brian Carrier, Mayor's Representative.
Got one more, At Large, I believe. I have audio. Dave Simpson, At Large, is here with us this evening as well. All right, thanks, Dave. Okay, to begin with communications, and I'm going to start this evening with communications this evening, because I need to announce that Rose Walker, if you noticed during our introductions, Rose Walker, in Ward One, has resigned her position on the Auburn School Committee. The resignation is due to the need to comply with residency requirements. The Walker family is relocating outside of Auburn. So, we are sorry to see her go. She was a thoughtful, dedicated member of our school committee, and we appreciate all her input in, in the conversations we've had over the last couple of months. So, best of luck to the Walker family. So, with that being said, there was a vacancy for Ward One. The vacancy will remain open until the November elections. And in speaking with the city clerk, nomination papers will be available in August, and those must be completed and signatures gathered in order to get on the November ballot. So, anyone interested who lives in Ward One can contact Sue Clements, at City Call, Sue Clements Delair at City Hall, and she can point you in the right direction. So, for the time being, there are seven of us serving on the school committee. So, that's my first communication. Second communication, I'd like to share this evening that this is the last school committee meeting for Superintendent Grandin. As we know, she has resigned her position after more than 30 years with the Auburn School Department. So, I wanted to take a moment to thank her publicly for all of her years of devotion and service to the Auburn School Department. I think the farewell parade was a reminder of how much you mean to the community. So, we wish you many successes in your next position, and we know you'll definitely be a bright spot in your next role. So, thank you so much, Superintendent Grandin, from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for those who joined the parade. It was awful, it was awfully special to have everybody there, and yeah, it was a humbling moment.
Sure, it was a wonderful moment, it was wonderful to experience, so thank you, thank you. All right, any other communications that we'd like to share this evening?
Karen, I did get an email that I'd like to share. I'm gonna, I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's from a parent, Ms. Jennifer Howitt. In, in general, she's asking about how the Auburn school system is going to address the current anti-racist movements with its curriculum. Well, for students, and so I, I could forward you this whole email. I thanked her in response, so.
So, she took the time, I believe, to email each one of us individually. Yeah, yep, she individually emailed each one of us. You know, several of us have responded, as well as Superintendent Grandin responded, and she was thrilled to hear the resources that we have available online right now, and, and understands that this is an area that the Auburn School Department recognizes of great importance, and an area of, of growth to be had by every human being in the world right now, and we include ourselves in on that. So, but thank you, Dave, for reminding us that that correspondence came through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyone else like to share communications this evening?
I guess, well, Karen, sorry, I just was thinking, sure. I don't know if you, and I probably should have sent it, so I apologize, but John Delorme and Julie, I won't say her last name right, Bosnol.
Bosnol? Bosnol?
I don't know.
Yeah, and Matumbo from middle school, and several other staff and students are planning an event for Friday, June, June, I'm not going to say that right either. Juneteenth, like, yeah, like 19, June 19. Yeah, thank, thank you, Pam. Event about how to talk about racism. It's, will be in the ELHS parking lot area. It's up by, it's going to be up by the turnaround, behind the gymnasium, and next to where the weight room is. But they're planning, it's called Chalk and Talk, and so, community members can come and draw how they're feeling about everything. They also have asked speakers to be there to speak. They will have resource materials for people to read, and children's books that might be of interest to folks. So, this is coming from our staff and students that want to do this event. As we know, Friday is a, an important date in slavery history around racism. I did notice today Harvard was recognizing it as a holiday, and Virginia, the state of Virginia, was also speaking about it also being considered a holiday. So, this is important then, so maybe you can pop in and see what's going on, and, and hear and listen and learn, which is what, what this is all about.
Thank you, Katie.
What time is the event, Katie?
It's three to six.
Thank you.
And you don't have to be there the whole time. It's more kind of, if you're available to pop in, so it's supposed to be fluid in that way. We, we've posted it on our social media and on our Facebook page.
It's on the Auburn School Department website as well, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
I believe so, I'm not sure if it's on our website. I do know it's on our Facebook page.
I know it's on your Facebook, I know it's on social media. I thought it was on the school department website, but maybe if not, could we pop it on there? Ask, ask them to pop that, okay, great, thank you.
Juneteenth, Juneteenth is also, June 19th, it's the day that slavery was abolished, and it started in Texas in 1865, I believe, so it's a pretty important date, so.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
All right, anyone else have communication they'd like to share this evening? Okay, seeing none.
Karen, sorry. So, Katie knows how I feel about her, but I just wanted to personally and publicly tell her how incredibly she'll be missed, and I know we will never find another superintendent that is so dedicated to the students and our community, because as we all know, I've worked with her for almost six years, and having kids graduate from EL, she is, every sporting event I go to, she's there, and I know she pours her heart and soul, and what I've always told her is, you could not pay me a million dollars. And I mean that, I said that to somebody today. If somebody said, if you'd be a superintendent, we'd pay you a million dollars, I could, I would never do it. So, I know we, Auburn will put their best foot forward with Dr. Brown, but you'll be incredibly, incredibly missed, and it won't be the same without you. I will incredibly miss you, and we love you, Katie. So, thank you for, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for everything.
Thanks, babe. All right, can I move on now? All right, let's go, let's move it on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which is also the approval of the minutes from June 3rd, as well as the certificateed nominations, which are on your agenda this evening?
So, move.
Oh, thank you both. All right, I'm with Brian Carrier for first, Brian Bellknap for second. All those in favor, show of hands, I can see all of you. Motion passes, thank you, everyone. All right, public participation, hopefully this too is one of our last times to have to make this announcement, that at this point, if anyone would like to call in to the Auburn School Committee, the number is potentially streaming on the bottom of the device you're watching, 207-240-3739. Just a reminder, if your call is not received, you can certainly email any of your school committee members going forward. Every time I do this, I think I should have the Jeopardy song playing right now. All right, let's close public participation, moving on, moving over student information. I don't, we don't have any of our students around this evening. Moving on, superintendent's report. So, we are going to slide down to business, the flexible spending account plans for the 2021 school year. As part of our onboarding package for this evening, Adam sent us the, the, all the forms, all of the information as part of our decision-making around this. So, before I ask for a motion, anyone need any clarifying questions? Right, if not, I'm, can I entertain a motion to approve the Auburn School Department flexible spending account plans for the 2021 plan year?
So move.
I've got, I have Brian and Brian again, Brian Bellknap and Brian Carrier as a second. And now I don't have you in front of me, so I'm going to do roll call. Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward, Ward Three's a yes, four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Dave Simpson?
Yes.
Brian Carrier?
Yes.
Wonderful, motion passes to approve the Auburn School Department flexible spending account plans for the next year. Policy reading, second reading of the JLCC communicable infectious diseases. This is our second reading for this policy. Any questions for Michelle on this? Michelle, did you want to add anything more to this piece? All right, hearing none, seeing none. Can I entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the above-listed policies as presented?
So move.
Second.
I almost need to see your mouths move at the same time. I didn't, I didn't catch either one of that. I'm not sure who posted that one. It was a male, it was a male voice, though. I think it's my two Bryans who keep jumping out of the gate. So, you, I'm, I heard Brian Bellknap and Brian Carrier again, so I'm going to take that. All right, let's do a roll call vote for motion passes, to see if the motion passes. Ward, Ward Two.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, Ward Three's a yes, Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Dave Simpson?
Yes.
Brian Carrier?
Yes.
Oh, did I get, did I get everyone? Yes, most in passes, seven, nothing, thank you. Finance Committee, you're up next to present the May 2020 Finance Report.
Well, we did went through the bills with, with Adam the other day, and everything's going fairly well. Our revenues are running at about 99% at this point, 40 million 907,000. Our expenses right now are coming in at about 64, a little bit over 64%. Adam will be giving us those exact numbers later on tonight. Our fund balances is setting at 95% right now. Leaving a million, or, excuse me, the Fund 1,000, excuse me, 95%, a million 900,000. Our grants are looking good, have about 900, I wrote this, I wrote 91,929. Adam, is that right or not?
Is that the balance, Brian?
Yeah, that's the, that's the balance for, oh, no, excuse me, the total was 455,002, I'm sorry.
That sounds right.
Yep, the revolving renovations, the cost came in sort of high. The low bidder at this point was H.G. Callahan. They suggested that we go back to bid for the project, because the costs are sort of high, and we gave them sort of a short time period to do it. So, those will be going back out to bid to try to get a better cost for those. CIP projects are running along very well. A lot of stuff is finished right now. Brian, excuse me, Adam can answer the specifics, but that's looking very good right now. And the last thing in regards to that was the security update. We did have a little bit of discussion about this. Mr. Hunter and Adam had talked to us about the security updates to the buildings. And instead of going out to bid, we currently have a relationship with two companies, and they both escaped me right now, EMS is one of them, I think.
ESM and ER field.
Yep, and we currently have a relationship, and they have been giving us a really good deal as far as the pricing on stuff. as far as the pricing on stuff, uh, where we're basically just getting charged for, uh, from one of them by part for parts and not giving us the fee for all the other stuff. And it's allowing us to save, uh, not a huge amount, but a good amount of money in these contracts. So we brought this forward, uh, with the finance committee, uh, to you folks that, uh, we, we didn't go to bid with it, but, but we're thinking we're saving, uh, quite a bit of money with it, so we brought it to you this way. Dave?
The only thing I'd add, Brian, is with that, those projects with the service end of it, like they've been very, as Adam explained, incredibly quick with the responses, sometimes responding the same day with no charge. So it seemed like the best, the best move at this time.
Those, those projects are about ten thousand dollars per school, so that the total will come in, uh, somewhere in the vicinity of forty thousand dollars, if that's correct, Adam?
Yeah, that's, that's about what we're estimating. We're talking about four schools where we'll be installing, um, you know, intrusion alert systems and estimating about ten thousand per school. And, uh, you know, the other advantage of not going through the bid process, we don't have to pay someone to write the specs and incur all the fees that go along with, with managing that. So we're, uh, the finance committee did approve us to work with those two local vendors to get this done. And we've started those discussions and looking forward to getting those done this summer.
And Adam, did you just want to go right on into our year-end stuff and give them sort of an idea where we're at right now?
Yeah, uh, so I've been saying for a couple of months, a ballpark estimate of remaining general fund, you've heard me say between five hundred thousand and a million. And, uh, as we get closer to the end of the year, I'm moving my estimate more toward a million, which I'm glad to be able to say. Um, I do think we'll be able between excess revenue and unspent budget to hit that million dollar mark to add to fund balance. But, you know, I always approach it as cautiously optimistic because we have two more months of invoices coming in that'll be charged to, to this year. But barring any big surprises, um, you know, we're looking good to hopefully add a million dollars to fund balance. So I'll continue to keep you posted, but we'll have a, you know, lot better idea where we're at a month from now after all of the teacher salaries and ed techs and things have been accrued, all the summer pays have been accrued. We'll know what the attendance was for out of district placements for June. Uh, the school bus will have been accrued, all those good things. So, um, we're, we're still on track, looking good, and I'll, I'll continue to update you.
And I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, that was a, a large portion of what was interesting to the council. And I think that when we changed the narrative of, of what we were doing in regards to the fund balance and what the cap was on it and the fact that we are going to be back at cap, uh, made a difference to the council insofar as the work that everybody has put in on this.
Yeah, it's a good point, Brian.
All right. Any other questions for our finance committee? Anything else you want to present this evening to us?
Yep.
Very good. Okay, can I entertain a motion to approve the finance report for May as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian Carrier, second?
Second.
I heard Dan on that, I heard Dan's voice pipe in and.
Good effort.
Thanks, thanks, Dan. All right, all those in favor, I can see you all, favor, seeing none opposed, motion passes to approve the finance report for May as presented. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, moving on to committees, finance committee, I think, uh, anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Think we're good? All right, policy subcommittee.
I think we're meeting, uh, next, next week, yeah, next week, I believe it is. Yeah, next Tuesday.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, Brian, city council update?
Uh, you guys saw it, we, we approved the budget, uh.
Unanimously, unanimously, that needs to be stated.
Yes, we did. No even, no discussion about it after we talked about it for so long, worked out very well, and I'm very happy.
You guys had plenty, you guys had plenty enough else to discuss.
Yes, it wasn't, it was an interesting meeting that carried on off camera.
Oh, yes, well, thank you for that. Anything else you'd like to update us on with city council right now, Brian?
No, uh, as you, as you really, as you all know, Peter Krittens' last day is the end of this month, and at that point, Phil Crowell will take over. And, uh, we'll be getting a new assistant manager, uh, also. So we're pretty excited with the team that's coming in.
All right, wonderful, thank you, Brian. Uh, curriculum subcommittee, uh, we meet tomorrow morning, actually. Um, Rose, I just want to sort of throw this in there as well, as I'm looking, as you're looking over subcommittees, you notice, um, you're going to notice that Rose was, uh, was part of three of them on here. So if anyone is interested in, uh, in replacing Rose on some of those committees, just please think about it and shoot me an email, uh, so that we can make sure there were at least two of us on most of these committees. So we will, uh, try to march on without her, but if you would like to join any of us in these committees, please let me know. Uh, community learning center.
I have nothing to report, Karen.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the new Edward Little Building Committee, uh, met last night, and I'm going to look back through my, so new building committee, we were updated on, uh, everything right now is moving along as it should per the timeline. Um, permitting has been submitted to the planning board, uh, there's a neighborhood meeting that is going to be coming up on, uh, June 23rd. Uh, historic preservation is happening, um, there are some things that will certainly be saved and moved for the next building, the statue, the granite sign, uh, the bell tower, those, those, uh, specific landmarks, uh, for Edward Little will be preserved and moved to in their, in new locations when the new Edward Little, um, comes to fruition, as well as the greenhouse. It's a concern for, um, the greenhouse will be preserved, relocated, uh, and hopefully accessible, um, although there was some question about whether or not that could happen, um, but it will, it's being preserved. Uh, the geographical boreings have been completed, the, um, I'm gonna say some of the, there are no changes to the, to the floor plan at this point. Uh, cost construction documents are start, they're starting to come in, estimates are starting to come in, uh, and the DOE will hold us very tight to the dollar amounts that have been approved, which is, is, um, some sense of comfort, knowing that we definitely have some contingency monies built in, but we really cannot extend beyond what, uh, we have been budgeted for. Um, let me think, let me think, uh, there are pre-qualification, there's a pre-qualification process for the general contractor, just to make sure that they can actually handle the, um, the size of the project. And I spoke about the timeline, our next meeting is on July 28th, which will come right after the July 23rd meeting with the DOE. Um, I think that's about it. Pam or Katie, did I miss anything?
Um, there is also, you, you were talking about how, um, they're, they're saving certain pieces of the old school and bringing it to the new one. They're also, because the old school was considered a, part of a historic, um, building, they're going to be filming, um, the inside of the school so that they can keep that as a record, um, otherwise we'd have to keep the building. But this is a way to be able to, um, get rid of the building, but also keep, um, its history. Um, another thing which I think, um, high school seniors will be very excited about is that the, um, this is the fun part.
I can't believe I forgot this part.
I know, this is like big. They'll be able to, um, have, they'll be able to have their own parking spots, um, which is, you know, ELHS tradition, um, is for seniors to have their own parking spot and they can paint it and decorate it, name it. Um, they will be able to have that at least until December. So the first semester, they will be able to use that because there was some discussion about, um, building before that and that they wouldn't be able to have that. Um, but luckily they, you know, they will at least be able to have that. Um, so that's exciting, so.
At some part, they will, at some point, they will get, um, relocated for, because that will become staff parking, but for now, they can paint their parking spots in August like they've always done. Thank you, Pam, I completely forgot about that part. Anything else I might have forgotten with building committee? I think I, all right, uh, DEI committee?
So, um, we have not met, but I have been in touch with, uh, Virginia and, um, and Laura, and I also sent them, um, a copy of what you sent, uh, what you put out, Katie, about, um, equity and, um, what's going on right now. And, um, Virginia did offer her assistance. She sent me an email and said, please let, uh, let folks know that I'm happy to be, to be a support, to offer guidance or ideas as the plans unfold for the upcoming school year. Um, I know there's a task force being put together and I'm happy to assist and share thoughts from an equity lens if has, if helpful, no pressure. Um, I just thought that would be, that was very kind of her to be able to, um, offer that because we could always use as much guidance as we can get.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Just for clarification, I, I have not heard task force, but maybe, maybe that's.
I think what she meant by that was the, uh, group or the committee that, um, was created with Michelle and Shelley and, um, I believe Karen, you're on that as far as, um, what to be, what, um, the fall is going to look like.
Oh, this, the safety and health committee meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. You mean the health, okay, that, yeah. I thought you were talking about like the racism task force or something.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, I'm sorry, is where she's alluding to, um, as far as, you know, beginning and, um, helping with equity on that, yeah.
Okay, all right, no, thanks for the clarification, I just want to make sure. Yeah. Okay, yeah, absolutely, thank you. Um, so that leads me into the safety and health committee, uh, meeting, and let me find my notes. There is a standing, uh, meeting every Wednesday morning at eight thirty, uh, that has for the last, Michelle, I'm thinking three or four weeks now? Seems like three or four weeks now, right? Okay. Uh, yes, and met again today. Uh, the, the four lenses are always being looked through, um, when this meeting comes, this, uh, committee comes together. Safety operations, which can include everything from sanitation and, uh, what food services look like, social distancing, transportation, um, there's also the learning lens, uh, health and safety practices, there's the well-being and protection of students and staff, as well as communication. So today was an opportunity for them to look back at, um, some of the practices they put into place last week with, uh, teachers coming into workshop. And so how some of those, uh, practices and protocols looked when we used it with just adults and how they might need to be modified, uh, when students come around. Uh, so that was a great opportunity. Uh, there was a discussion, there's lots of discussions going on, uh, making sure that, um, you know, the appropriate PPE is, is provided and available, trainings for staff and expectations around when gloves are worn, when sanitation needs to happen, when masks need to be worn, um, all of that, all of that stuff. Um, there are also surveys that are about to go out to staff as well as families, um, asking for their experience through, and I will call it the emergency remote learning, emergency teaching, uh, as well as their thoughts for the future. Um, there is a, an understanding from this committee that there will be, you know, some need for some professional development around remote learning. As an educator myself, I can speak to many of the things that I've had professional development around. Remote learning and teaching online has not been one of them. So there's a recognition that, um, that that is going to need to take place as well as communication to families sooner rather than later, even if it is a, uh, communication of we don't yet know, uh, we need to start really informing our parents. So now that children are out of school, teachers are done, workshop, it's now, and, and summer is sort of off and rolling, the summer rec program is happening, uh, the, um, childcare is happening, what really needs to happen for, uh, for the fall, that's, that's sort of the next piece. Did I leave anything out, Michelle? It's an outstanding committee, I, I will, I can say that, it's an outstanding committee.
That's great, Pam, uh, uh, excuse me, Karen, that, that's it exactly, and our eye just turns now to really honing in on.
Oh.
So stay tuned, everyone, we say, right, Karen? I know you.
We keep saying, we keep saying, we keep saying, we're not sure yet. We are following DOE, uh, guidelines and we have to wait to hear from the DOE, although we don't yet know when the DOE will make their, uh, their announcement. So it is, stay tuned, yes. Go, go ahead, Dave. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna plug in my computer, I'm not going off screen, go ahead, I'm listening.
I'm just curious, it might be outside of the scope of this committee, but as far as the return to school, is there like concurrent planning happening? If, you know, if it's full school, if it's whatever it is, or is that, you know?
So.
I'm sorry, I just was curious about that.
So I can tell you that, um, right now, I know that the majority of school districts are planning for the three scenarios, whether that be a complete return in person, whether it be a hybrid model, or whether it be remote learning, uh, model. And so schools are getting ready, we'll have to submit a plan to the DOE, uh, to be approved. So we can't just decide this is the way we're going and this is what it's going to look like. The DOE is going to have to approve whatever plan, um, they tell us we have to go through. Does that make sense? So if they tell us you're going remote learning, here's our plan for remote learning. They're telling us you're opening fully, here's your, here's our plan for opening fully. Does that make sense?
It, yeah, I think it's a complete overreach by the DOE, but yes, it makes sense.
I'm going to refrain from my.
Yeah, they're going to look at the metrics in the community in terms of COVID, so that's, for what we know, this is the, the two filters that we know that they're going to use in that, and that is what the community metrics are in terms of COVID and, uh, then the capacity of the school department to meet the guidelines that they've put out. And between those two filters, somehow, we're, um, after today's meeting, we're seeking more, um, specific guidance on what that process will look like and the timeline on that process. How do we, do we access that? Do they approach, how's that going to look? So we're looking for further clarifications. We will keep you posted. We're going to also, as at Karen's suggestion, um, make sure that we communicate out, we haven't communicated out in a bit about this, so we will put something, the unfortunate thing is we don't have a lot to say yet, but we can say that.
Right.
Thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, I know this is out of order, we, the policy, um, committee. Uh, Michelle, are we still working on the, um, the food allergy? I know like that was in full force before COVID and then kind of COVID came in and, you know, it took all of our attention, obviously. Um, but I was just, I just want to make sure that we're still kind of looking at that.
So we're looking at a lot of policies, we're trying to prioritize some policies. I've been in touch with, uh, parents who were concerned about that policy and they totally, fully, um, gave support, uh, the focus, um, not necessarily being on that right now. That policy is, is really pretty much ready, um, to go before the subcommittee. It's very, very, very close. Um, it needs to go back to the, the nurses once more. And once that happens, then, uh, and they have the, the time and the attention to be able to do that, um, it'll be ready to come. But Pam, just keep asking about it and I'm happy to update.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, technology, Brian?
Yeah, so, uh, Peter and I finally caught up the other day, um, which was great, we had a great conversation. Um, we've now discussed, you know, meeting on a more regular basis every, I think we slated as the fourth Wednesday of every month, just so that we can have something on the calendars and, and whatnot. But, uh, uh, some of the things that we talked about, some of the highlights, um, you know, one of the things being, you know, once Dr. Brown comes on, we've really got to kind of get with her, figure out kind of what her stance is on technology, where, what her goals are, what her strategies are, see how they align with Peter's and, and really kind of figure out how and how we, well, how we approach technology, how the subcommittee can be helpful, how do we form, you know, what, what is the subcommittee going to do? You know, what is it, uh, and how can we, you know, uh, you know, kind of align those direction and goals? Um, a couple of the other things that we talked about, uh, one of the great things that we talked about was, uh, Peter had, uh, filmed me in on, they'd used some, uh, CARES money for Power School added, so they could do pre-K and kindergarten registration online, which I thought was great. You know, the ability, I'm sure it had its own bumps and, and, and challenges, but it sounds like it's gone so well that, uh, we're now looking at doing, uh, back-to-school online packet or packets online as well. Um, I agree to be a guinea pig late in the summer for Peter, for my own vested interest anyway. Um, so we'll test that out and see how that goes, be able to clear it up, make sure it's easy to use, but, um, you know, the whole online process seems to be going pretty well, uh, which is good.
But, you know, the whole online process seems to be going pretty well, which is good. That's the good news. The, the one bad news I have to report is, so as part of all our budget conversations, we paid a lot of the lease payments, we paid the buyouts, we paid the insurance. We, we, we paid a lot of that and we took some of the technology money out for next year. And I don't have an exact figure of what that was. One of the concerns that Peter has is some of that money was allocated to go towards piloting devices for, you know, we're, we're taking that year off to figure out what MLTI is doing and what the next steps are. Some of the money that was in next year's budget was going to be used for, you know, piloting certain devices. So we're going to have to figure out what that means. You know, obviously the conversations haven't started yet, really, to, obviously everything's been kind of busy right now. But we haven't started talking about, you know, what that looks like. But, you know, it's certainly going to come with some, you know, some challenges with, with piloting devices and the money to support that. So.
So Brian, just so I understand your, so piloting devices, meaning you might have used, some kids might have used Apple computers, some kiddos might have used Chromebooks, some kiddo, right? Is that?
Yeah, I think that's the idea is to, is to look at the, the various devices, come up with a plan of, you know, in justification of certain devices and then pilot them in certain rooms to see how they go. You know, and, and what that device looks like, I, we don't have an idea what that is yet. It might be Chromebooks, might be Apple, might be iPads, you know, whatever that looks like. But, you know, we'll want to pilot those devices to make sure that is going to accommodate, you know, the, what the, the needs essentially.
Okay. All right. I'm just thinking the district I work for, we use Chromebooks. So if you want to reach out to RSU four and their tech department, they'd be sure, and happy to let you know their thoughts on, their, their thoughts on those devices if you're looking for someone who's been using it.
Yeah, and I was talking to Peter, there's a whole plan or there will be a plan to, to look at, you know, each, each of the types of devices, what it can do, what it, you know, what are the downsides, what are the upsides? You know, I, I think the big challenge will be just the money to, to pilot those devices that it's going to cost.
Okay. All right.
And not having that in the budget. But we'll, we'll have to have further conversations, I'm sure about that.
Okay, right. Thank you, Brian. Wellness subcommittee. Have you met?
Sorry, I couldn't find the mute.
It's people, I know what people are doing. They get closer and they.
Sorry, we have not met.
Okay, thank you.
That committee won't meet again until school.
It won't. Well, it, okay, I wasn't sure. All right. Audit subcommittee.
Yeah, we met with the auditors and they gave us kind of a, an introduction, high level, what they were looking for, what they're, you know, they're, they're starting their process. You know, I think Faith is the only person on the entire committee that's not new. So, you know, city council as well. So they kind of walked us through their process and, and at a very high level and just kind of, you know, it, it sounds like they're just starting to kick off that process. So.
Yeah, they're just entering, entering and beginning the stages. So they'll give us an update and keep us informed of what they find. So we will, hopefully they don't find much. So hopefully we don't have much to report.
Good. Thank you. Transportation?
Nope.
Okay. Share Center, obviously Rose is not here this evening. I don't believe they've reopened. And although my name is on that subcommittee, that's something I need, I sort of punted over to Rose. So I will be in contact with the director of the Share Center. Negotiations?
So, yeah, go ahead. So we're supposed to, or I guess I'll go ahead. We're supposed to meet on the sixth. Sorry, it's been a long week already. And unfortunately, there's some of the food services in place were unable to meet because of unforeseen circumstances. So we are going to, we don't have a new meeting time yet, right, Adam? No. But we are going, like I said, we're going to meet in person, six feet apart. There's not many of us, so just face-to-face interaction. We just thought that held more ground than Zoom.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Parent advisory. See, the last time I just assumed no one met, people were jumping in. So that's why I'm going one at a time this time. Parent advisory?
No, nothing.
Okay. All right. So like I said, if you are interested in serving on any of the subcommittees that Rose was on previously, just let me know. Upcoming meetings, be, we have moved the July first upcoming regular meeting to July eighth. July first is Dr. Brown's first day on the job. And so it just seems to make sense to move it to the following week, July eighth. So that puts us July eighth and July twenty-second for our July meetings, August fifth and August nineteenth for our August meetings. I'd also like to, and I will be sending out a survey for all of you, I would also like to propose a summer retreat for the school committee. I think this was something we had talked about doing back in March before the pandemic hit. And so I think it might be with a new superintendent, superintendent coming aboard, a good time to hold a retreat at some point when we're on the summer break. So be looking for a survey on that school committee as to days, times that, that will work best. So with that being said, future agenda items and requests for information, you can either let us know now or you can send me an email and I will forward that along. I am meeting with Dr. Brown on July first as well as, I can't remember the other date. We'll be setting up the agenda for the July eighth meeting. So if you have anything you'd like to add, please let me know. At this time, does anyone have anything they know they'd like to add to a future agenda item? All right, hearing none. It is seven forty-two. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting?
So moved.
Oh, I heard Pam on that one. And who was my second? I didn't catch my second. Was that Brian Bell? Not?
No, Dan.
No, no, Dan.
That's Dan. Thank you, Dan. All right, all those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting? Seeing not opposed, motion passes. Thank you all very much. Enjoy your next couple of days. Be looking for that survey. And Katie? Best of luck in your next role.
We'll miss you, Katie.
Hi, Katie.
You'll do great.
Katie, best of luck to you.
Can you announce? Have, can you, are, can you say anything? No, okay.
I, I will be approved on June twenty-fourth and then it will be official.
June twenty-fourth and then it will be official. Okay.
We know this is amazing. So thank you for all of your dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Goodbye, all. Have a good night.